Here.
Commissioner Verino? Commissioner Alderetti?
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo?
Here.
Chair McLaughlin?
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza?
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Fledge of Allegiance? And Beatrice, would you lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? If you do, please fill out a request-to-speak form from the secretary. And after introductions, you have three minutes to speak unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson. Does anybody wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public speaking. We'll move on to the consent calendar. This is the time for the commission to consider matters under the consent calendar, including items A and B. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar for items A and B?
So moved.
I second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six to zero. Moving on to the business calendar. The first item on the business calendar is the public hearing of item number one, modify the conditional use permit number 2011-09 to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption at Marcos Zamora located at 3701 West McFadden Avenue. Do any of the commissioners have anything to disclose at this time?
Mr. Chair, not a disclosure but more of a question for staff. It says on here that you're recommending that we go ahead and continue the item, but if we would like to discuss it, do we need to open a public hearing? Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask that we open the public hearing on this item for discussion, please.
So at this time, is there anybody that would like to speak on behalf of this item? You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Move on to...
Is the public hearing only just...I was gonna say, I would like to speak on the items. So usually we open the hearing for the public to...
For the public.
Okay.
That's what I just did. Just closed it.
But I'd like to discuss amongst us.
Now it comes back to the commission.
Well, Mr. Chair and colleagues, I'd like to ask staff, so why are we continuing this item? And the reason I'm asking is because it came to us in July. They had a couple of items that they needed to correct. So I'm hoping that they've done it, but I'm assuming they probably haven't if we're being asked to continue it.
Commissioner Becerra, you are correct. They adopted inspection about two, three weeks ago, and they had not completed all the different items that they needed. If you can recall, there were some lighting issues, some signage, some TI work inside the building. So they hadn't completed the works. Rather than bring it before you here with recommendation of denial, we gave them a little bit of time to right their ship. We've got code enforcement after them. We've talked to them. We're a little sensitive to their project. They are small business owners. This is not their expertise, so we're trying to get them to comply. So we want them to comply instead of punishing them. So we put it continuing indefinitely, gave them a couple of weeks to get their stuff in, talking to the case planner at Scarlet. They've done all the things they need to do to get them in now. So the plans are in for plan check to legalize that, to remove that wall between the suites. They're gonna get the signs into compliance in the next couple of weeks. We weren't sure when we were gonna bring it back to planning commission, so we asked that we continue indefinitely to set up a firm date. So they are in the process of getting into compliance now.
Well, colleagues, I'm a little frustrated because we've given them some time to do some work that is relatively easy. And if I might ask you one more question, have they applied for an entertainment permit?
Not yet, no.
But yet, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, everybody, but they were informed of that issue...
Correct.
...three, four months ago.
Correct.
You know, I know that some people look at this commission and say, "Oh, God, you guys just give out liquor licenses and just, you don't even look in the rearview mirror." Here's an item that's right in our face that's not following the rules, and they're not applying for a new CUP per se. They are asking for permission on an existing CUP. So they've had this thing for years, and they still are not demonstrating the ability to follow the rules. So, you know, I'm at this point right now, and I would like to hear from my colleagues, but I'm almost at the point of actually asking staff to come back at the next meeting with a resolution to deny the application.
I agree.
Did you ask?
I feel the same way. I believe the entertainment permit was something not new from our last meeting, but something existing that they already should have had. So to continue to work that way shows no good faith on their behalf in our community. So I agree with that. Mr. Becerra?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
This is a question to the staff. Have we sent them like an ultimatum type of letter saying, "If you don't have this within 30 days, then we will take action and maybe present a resolution so we can deny your permit"?
Yeah, we sent them an email a couple of weeks ago. How much time have we given Scarlet? Yeah, we gave them two weeks, so the deadline to comply is any time now. And Scarlet just let me know that everything we asked them to do, they've done, with the exception of applying for the entertainment permit. And that's something that can be done, you know, 20 minutes over the counter.
Well, I mean, here's the thing, they've had three months to do it. So whether it's an email from staff two weeks ago, which I appreciate that you guys are trying to follow up with them, but the reality is, they were at a public hearing months ago, and for somehow, some reason, they just didn't seem to understand that there were some rules that they were violating. And again, I agree with Ms. Contreras Leo that they're not operating in good faith. How am I to believe that they're ever gonna come back? Or just gonna have a lingering, open application, or they're just gonna continue to operate because, hey, no one's pushing them? I mean, I understand we've got code enforcement coming in, that's fine, but again, this has been an issue lingering for some time. I know we can't deny the item tonight. We need staff to come back with a resolution if we were to go down that course. I would like to actually make a motion that we ask staff to come back, bring back a resolution, a draft resolution for denial.
I second the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question to our counsel. Have we ever done that, done a motion to deny a permit before it was on the agenda, too?
It's on the agenda.
I mean, I'm sorry, has this ever been done where we can deny it before?
Well, it is on the agenda for tonight, but staff is recommending continuance to allow them to continue working. We'll bring it back. We can draft, if you want, if you believe that the staff recommendation should be denial, then we can draft a denial resolution.
I think in 30 days, there'll be an item before us, and we can easily vote no on that item. Give them a little more motivation to correct their issues.
Okay, is there any further...yeah, Eric?
So is, just so I'm clear, the previous staff recommendation was what? I just, I don't think I was here.
It was to approve an upgrade of a license from a 41 to, I believe it was a 47, yeah.
So the basis now that the commission's directing nonapproval is that they've been tardy in submitting?
Well, I think that...
That's what I wanna know.
Yeah, let me kind of outline what I think was what happened in July. And that is, is that they came in for a routine request to go from a beer and wine to a full alcoholic license. But what was identified at that time was that they had an issue with a permit as far as construction of the facility itself, so they didn't get a permit for some of the construction that they had done in the facility over the last couple of years. That was one item. The second item was that they had entertainment going on in the facility in the lines of karaoke, but didn't have an entertainment license at the time. And also, there was a question about this amount of signage and lights that they had on the outside of the building and on the inside of the building, which didn't comply with standards. So the request from the commission was that they go back. They had three months to go back and correct those situations. And here we are after three months, and the situations have not been corrected. And so I think, you know, I mean, I'm not in favor of extending it for an indefinite period of time. I mean, I think we have a motion at this point in time to do one action. I think, you know, staff can come back at the next meeting, and we can cover that motion and then work it from there if it's voted upon, so.
Mr. Chair?
My concern is just directing from the dais what the outcome ought to be of staff. That's really my only concern.
Well, Commissioner Alderetti, I'm ready to deny it tonight, but I know that we don't have a resolution before us.
Nor do we have a staff report.
We have a staff report, and we...
Not in front of us, we don't?
Well, for those of us that were actually at the last hearing, we saw a staff report that actually had...
Okay, so do you have perfect recollection of that report?
I have a recollection of that.
What was on page three?
I actually have a recollection of that.
What was on page three?
But we really haven't this discussion.
We are.
Come on.
Because I'm concerned about directing from the dais what the outcome ought to be.
If I wanted to deny something that's already been before the commission, what's my recourse? What's the course of action?
To continue it.
Just to keep continuing it.
No, not forever, but...
But that's what's before us.
We've had how many continuances?
This would be the first.
Right.
For this particular item?
This item, correct.
Yes.
I think for Ms. Alderetti, what happened at that meeting was they came in with the intent to take care of one item, and unfortunately for them, there is a good presence from the community that came in with pictures and proof that they were not following other rules and they were violating code enforcement items with their signage and lighting. The way they had their windows was in violation. And then we realized as well that they knew they were supposed to have an entertainment permit, and they had not made an effort to also go after that. So with the community here, they were saying they have not been good neighbors. That was their position. So there was many items that came from it that we said, "How, you're coming here to ask for something from us, but you're not acting in good faith with your neighbors as you are supposed to." So we said, "Okay, fix these items, go back and do this, and then come back." And now we're at the point where they're still not fixing many of those items.
Mr. Chair, if I might also add that one thing that I do clearly remember from the last staff report and resolution was that staff went above and beyond and actually added two conditions that we normally don't see on CUPs. One was for a sign program, which was in reference to the fact that they didn't comply with the sign regulations of the city. And the other was to submit TIs because they had illegal construction inside. Again, something we don't see on other applications. So I think, again, I applaud staff for their willingness to try to get the business across the finish line on this application, but I think Ms. Contreras Leo really illustrated what happened at the last hearing that I think swayed a lot of the members up here.
Beatrice?
I'm not sure, Commissioner Alderetti, if you were to read the minutes, but I actually don't recall a lot of community input against them. I just recall one. So I just wanted to make a clarification on that. I don't know if the staff can clarify that, but I just remember just one. I don't think we had a lot of opposition.
Yeah, there was just one person speaking about the project. And just to clarify, they have an application before you, a type 47, which costs thousands and thousands of dollars for them to obtain. That's the hammer that we have to get them into compliance. And they want this ABC license upgrade, and it'll be a waste of their cash, their time, and their money if they don't comply with this, with our requirements, because they're gonna lose that investment in the project there. So we do have mechanisms to get them into compliance, and that is this type 47 license. We'll work harder with them. We'll get them on the agenda pretty quickly. Scarlet's been in contact with them lately, and they're aware of what they need to do. And it won't take long to get entertainment permit application turned into us and to get into police department, and it'll probably take a week to get it approved. So we can move forward with that. So in theory, if we come back in 30 days, we'll have everything all wrapped up and put together with what you're looking for to get into compliance. Again, we're not here to be punished, punitive. We want them to get into compliance.
I'm not withdrawing my motion.
Pardon?
I'm not withdrawing my motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Beatrice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In that meeting, I had suggested possibly working together with the staff to come up with a checklist so that this doesn't happen again. Obviously, it's happening again. So for example, making sure they're complying with their entertainment permit, their construction, their signs, before we even decide to vote on giving them the liquor license, because now we're coming up with this problem. Has there been any discussion on that, on making a possible checklist so that...
Well, Scarlet, our case planner, has been working with them. She'll have everything identified in the staff report for you that you're looking for. It'll be broken down into items that were raised at this July meeting and also what the resolution is. So that is essentially your checklist there before you.
So they've had a checklist for three months.
Any concern from a legal standpoint of this particular motion with regards to directing staff?
So the motion, so far as you stated, is to come back in 30 days with a recommendation denying?
Correct.
Well, staff gets to make the decision for the recommendation, and then you get to decide on the dais whether or not you agree with that recommendation.
Okay, so that's fine. So then, I guess, bring it back in...well, I guess, what's the mechanism then? So if we want to deny it tonight, I mean, we don't, like Commissioner Alderetti said, we don't have a staff report in front of us, although we have something because we continued the item from before. So there was a staff report, there was a draft resolution that had recommendation to approve with certain conditions. So I guess I'm looking to you to say, so what do we do? So, I mean, because again, we don't have an instrument to deny, or do we? That's, I guess, now I'm really confused.
No, no, since the staff recommendation was to continue the matter indefinitely, you can make a motion to continue it to a date certain if that's what you'd like to do.
But I can't, we can't make an action tonight to approve or deny.
I don't believe so, because we put this in here to continue it. So the applicant income...
Yeah, it's not agenda.
...the staff's income, from the public's income, if they wanted to speak on the matter, because they saw the recommendation was to continue.
But the item's been noticed. It's on the agenda.
Yes, it is.
So, I mean, we can take an action. I mean, I'm not aware of the Brown Act saying if staff of a legislative body recommends something that the body can't make a decision.
You can make a decision if you'd like, but I don't think that it's fair in the intent of the Brown Act.
The intent was for it to be noticed. It's on a public agenda. I mean, it's not like it was a work-study session, and we decided to illicitly try to make it an action item. I mean, it's on the business calendar, the agenda, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'd like to ask staff, what would be fair? What is it that you recommend in terms of time for them to...you know, one thing is to email them and check and see their progress, another is to email them and state, you know, you have two weeks and we need things wrapped up.
We can bring it back on December 11th, 30 days.
Ken?
Yeah. What I can see here is applicant currently have holding a type 41 liquor license, and he applying for to getting 47 liquor license, a full liquor license. And at the same time, he operating with the illegally structure inside his premise, and he knowingly that the entertainment not require a permit and approval by the city, but he conducting a karaoke, some sort of entertainment inside a restaurant. And we, this commission have gave him 30 days, or three months, to come back and correct that violation that is currently happening in his business. He still have not coming back. I think this body should ask for this applicant to, this particular subject, to put on the continuing the next meeting, and let the blank commission vote on it. Vote on it, either deny or approve it, his application request. I think it's unfair to ask the staff to make a recommendation to deny the application without the giving this body a privilege of the approving or denying it.
Eric, did you have something else?
No.
Okay. Okay, so from a motion perspective at this point in time, we have a motion. No further discussion? Do we want to vote on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Well, say that, I'm sorry, I did not vote. I'm not quite clear of that motion.
Can we do it again?
Can we do it again, please?
All right, we'll do a redo. So let's repeat the motion, and so everybody has...can, will the secretary please repeat the motion?
So what I have is to, in 30 days, to bring back a resolution to deny the original recommended action.
With a second?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to possible, number two, is that motion get seconded?
Yes, it take a second.
The motion is a second.
If possible, can I...
You can amend it.
Amendment motion, request the application to come back for continuing on specific, next month in 30 days?
That's pretty much what the motion is, except we'll be given something from staff that allows us to deny it if we should choose to vote that way.
But I think it's unfair to push, making staff to make that decision, denying an application without the, you know, this particular commission have to say, have say on it.
So we keep saying 30 days. Are we coming back as a body in 30 days or in two weeks?
30 days.
We are coming back in 30 days.
There may be a meeting on November 27th. We may have a meeting after all. But we need time to get together with the applicant holidays next week, so we'd want 30 days, December 11th.
Okay, you know what? If the person who seconded my motion is okay with this, I'd like to go ahead and amend my motion then, since it seems like we're hearing a continuous chorus of 30 days. We'll just have the applicant come back in 30 days, and at that point, for us to make a determination. So instead of continuing it indefinitely, let's continue it to a date certain, which would be 30 days.
December 11th.
December 11th.
For the record, I'm sorry, for the record, so Commissioner Nguyen is amending Commissioner Becerra's motion, and you have accepted that amendment, correct?
If the amendment is to bring it back date certain, December 11th, then yes, I'll accept that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six to zero. Okay. Move on. At this time, place a public hearing on item number two, conditional use permit numbers 2017-27 and 2017-28 to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for the premise of, for on-premise consumption at two proposed restaurant establishments at 1901 Residential Development located at 1901 East First Street. Do any commissioners have anything that they wish to disclose regarding this item at this time?
No.
Hearing none. Staff, would you please present?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. This request before you this evening is an application for conditional use permit number 2017-27 and conditional use permit number 2017-28 for on-premise alcohol consumption for Purvita Juice Bar and Huskins Coffee Bar located at 1901 East First Street, Unit 136 and Unit 138. The description of the project is to sell alcoholic beverages such as beer and wine for on-premise consumption through type 41 ABC license. Purvita Juice Bar and Huskins Coffee Bar will occupy the retail space of 1901, which is a mixed-use community, at East First Street and Cambria Park Drive. The site is located in our tier commercial C5 and Metro East mixed-use overlay district. The site is surrounded by professional offices to the northeast and west, and a government facility to the south. The site plan displayed is out of 1901, which is a mixed-use community. The red star on the site plan indicates the location of the two restaurant establishments, which are Purvita Juice Bar and Huskins Coffee Bar. The highlighted red areas on the floor plan are the proposed alcohol storage areas. Purvita Juice Bar has an overall alcohol storage area of 16 square feet, while Huskins Coffee Bar has a total of 17 square feet, which is less than 5% of the grass floor area required for both restaurants. Therefore, both restaurants establishments are consistent with the Santa Ana municipal code requirements. The site photo shows that these two restaurant establishments are located within the retail space of 1901. The establishments are in the process of constructing interior tenant improvements with expected completion date in approximately three months. Therefore, there is currently no outside signage. The project currently meets all of Santa Ana municipal codes requirements. The restaurant and the sale of alcoholic beverages will provide a service to the community and its visitors. The sale of alcoholic beverages will attract additional patrons from surrounding neighborhoods and contribute to the overall economic success of these small businesses. Standards will ensure that the restaurants will not deviate from the planned operations reviewed under this application and will not become an attractive nuisance. With that, staff recommends that planning commission approves conditional use permit number 2017-27 and conditional use permit number 2017-28. I'm available for additional questions, and we also have our representative, Michael Cho, speaking on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chad. Does the commission have any questions of staff? Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question. So we were talking about a stage being constructed. Do we have a timeline as to when the stage will be constructed in relation to the opening of the business with alcohol?
There is no timeline. The DJ and stage area are just, it's just something proposed, and it's like a potential DJ or stage area. So there's still some uncertainty.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My understanding to, in the process of applying for the ABC license, first, the applicant must go through with the State of California ABC license process. On that application package, the applicant must have received the approval from the landlord to allow that particular space to, you know, offering alcohol sales. We have received communication from the landlord dated November 12 at 4:39 PM, indicated he is rejecting or not supporting the application. I'm a little confused, because the able to, getting the application accepted by the State of California, the landlord must agree to sign off on that application before go to city for the CUP. So I'm a little confused on that.
Commissioner Nguyen, none of us are aware of that application, that email that, of course, correspondence you received. The landlord is right there in the audience. She's shaking her head, kind of confused as well. So she can address your question here if you'd like.
Would you like to comment on it?
I am not aware.
The site by Mr. Kayon Lee?
The property's on the line, communities, that person who sent the email is not the property owner of this particular property.
Commissioner Nguyen, I think that property that you're describing for this person who sent the letter is, I think, half a block or a block to the east. It's not the subject property before us, but I think they are the...
That makes sense.
It's a concerned citizen, I believe.
That makes sense to me, yeah.
Beatrice?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was looking at the times for both of the restaurants. Just curious, why are the times different if it's in the same building?
There are two different restaurant establishments. One is Purvita Juice Bar, and the other one's Huskins Coffee Bar. So they do have different operation hours.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to discuss the item at this point in time?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, staff, and members of the Santa Ana community. My name is Michael Cho. I'm an attorney with Paul Mary Tyler. I represent the property owner and the applicants in this conditional use permit application. We've worked closely with staff and like to thank them for their assistance, because it is not a traditional type of licensing situation. We have two tenants, and they'll be sharing a common area dining area, because the way it's laid out, so you don't have two specific suites. They have two specific areas for their business, but their patrons will be dining in a common area. And so that adds a little twist to it, but, you know, it's just becoming more and more the norm in restaurating today, that you have common areas that you can share seating and dining with. With respect to the email that came in this afternoon, I believe that was from a neighboring property owner that owns a small shopping center or retail center, and I think they're expressing their concern about having, I don't want to say competitor in the area, but, you know, new retail space that may impact their own tenants. But this is a large project that is, you know, provides services not only to the general community, the offices around, but primarily, you know, for the residents. And by having a juice bar and a coffee bar, they are able to operate at different hours and fill in, that's why you see different hours of operation. And then they'll also be offering food products. And then they'll also be offering food products, so this is, you know, everything still relates back to the mandatory requirement that they comply with the ABC rules and still be a food provider, which they will both have. They have full menus available, and as such, you know, we've read the staff report and the recommendations for approval, we're in support of that. And again, if you have any questions for me, I can answer them, and I also have Carolyn Hillgren from Lion Communities here, representing the property owner and developer, that can answer any questions you may have regarding the operations or development of the space.
Do any of the commissioners have a question?
I do respect that you have different type, do different businesses and operate the same sharing space, common space, but I hope you also realize that if anything affect the, you realize there's only one permit, if anything affect, any kind of violation from ABC affect one unit, the other, the other business also will lose their license privilege as well.
That's correct. Yes, we are aware, and the tenants are aware of that also.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Nguyen, there are two CUPs being approved today, one for each business, in case of just what you stated.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I, it might sound petty, but when I hear juice bar, I think of like Jamba Juice or Coffee Bar, I guess Starbucks has tried to do the alcohol thing as well, but when you're serving alcohol, what, what kinds of food, is it just snack food, or is it a little bit heartier?
It's heartier, it's sandwiches, it's salads, in the break, in the morning hours are going to be breakfast-related food items, you know, with protein such as eggs and bacon and things like that. I think Carolyn can go over the menu that they've provided, each, each tenant has provided. And in juice bars, it's gone beyond the Jamba Juice, now you have, you know, eight-dollar cups of juice that I still have a hard time buying, but, you know, that's where the marketplace is today, and along with those high-end juices are specialty sandwiches, salads, things like that, soups, paninis, and I believe the, the, the coffee provider, Huskins, may try to provide some more savory items at dinnertime, if, as the market develops, or trying to see what's going to happen with their customer base first.
Now, is there seating outside?
I don't believe so, no, there's no seating outside.
There is proposed patio seating, yes.
I mean, if there's, if we're creating a different ambiance where it's welcoming, people hang out, have a drink, eat, because how, how much is the, how many available seating is inside?
I can have it, when you come up.
Yeah.
So, there's two proposed patio areas, it's really minimal outdoor seating space, maybe maximum of ten tables or so, it's just in an effort to create an indoor-outdoor feel. I think it'll be used mostly by residents in lunchtime more so than, than evening, but we definitely wanted to provide that as an option and be upfront with that.
That sounds good, thank you.
Question for either one of you, so both establishments have a full kitchen, correct?
Yes. They have their own separate.
Correct, but I mean, it's a full kitchen, it's not a hot plate and microwave?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Patrice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been to a similar facility, I think it's similar, but in Anaheim, where they have the juice bar, actually it's a coffee bar, and then they have the pool really close to it, and there is no alcohol allowed in the pool. Is the alcohol allowed outside of the dining area?
No, so the alcohol would only be within the retail space on the patio, but our pool and rec deck area, so to speak, is completely separated, it's on the rooftop of our parking structure, which is pretty much the exact opposite side of the property, so there would be no carryover from the retail.
Eric, did you have a question?
No.
With, I mean, it, it's located on the corner there, is it not a?
Correct.
On First and the site, so, at this point in time, I mean, there's not a lot of distance between First and the building itself at that, right there on the edge, so it's pretty close.
Yeah, and we've had our architect and interior decorator look at it and maximize the space, and honestly, that's part of the reason why we've created two patios as opposed to one. It was just more appealing to both tenants to spread it out that way, and then also, it just was more feasible in terms of maximizing the square footage, because like you said, it is, it is tighter, but this is kind of the ideal layout.
Sure.
That we've studied.
Okay. Does the commission have any other questions of the applicant? No? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, have we received any written communications on this item?
All written communication has been distributed to the commission.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Is that, is, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item at this time? Hearing none, we'll close the public speaking, and we'll move on. Do I have a motion to consider item number two? Phil?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I for one am happy that, to see some activation in that building, you know, most of the members up here approve the project overall, so we're happy to see that there's finally some action coming into that ground floor space, I'm sure the office tenants nearby are as well, so with that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving CUP number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven and CUP number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-eight.
I second.
Second. Patrice? Okay. Any further discussion on the item? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six, zero. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. It's now the time and place for public hearing on item number three, zoning ordinance amendment number two zero one seven dash zero five, to amend chapter forty-one of the Santa Ana Municipal Code to allow the establishment of small lot subdivisions. Do any of the commissioners have anything to disclose at this time? Okay. Hearing none. Staff? Please go ahead with the presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Before you today, we have an ordinance to allow the subdivision of small lots. This originally came to you all as a study session back in October twenty-third. I'm going to go ahead and go briefly through the presentation, and if you have any questions, feel free to answer those towards the end. As mentioned, this would amend chapter forty-one of the Santa Ana Municipal Code by adding article twenty, in order to allow the subdivision of small lots in certain zoning districts, and I'll get into that later on. So what is a small lot subdivision? A small lot subdivision is a project that constructs several freestanding single-family dwelling units on lots that are smaller than conventional single-family lots. So typically, a single-family home right now requires a minimum lot size of six thousand square feet. So again, this is not your typical subdivision, our proposed ordinance would allow a minimum lot size of a thousand square feet. So you initially begin with a, a lot, usually typically anywhere between six thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet, to an acre, twenty acres, whatnot, and then the proposed ordinance will then allow that initial lot to be subdivided into smaller lots. This just has a representation of what that initial lot, lot looks like, and then what it could potentially be built into. So just some quick facts, we went over this last time. These are freestanding lots, meaning that the property owner owns the actual land and the building as well. It kind of is differentiated between condos where the owner of a condo only actually owns the condo, but not necessarily the land. They primarily have access off of an easement, so typically driveways are an easement access in order to grant access to these individual lots versus a private street or a city-owned And as mentioned, these are individual units, they typically do resemble that of a townhome development, however, small lot subdivisions are single structures, so there is a separation between these units, although not necessarily a huge significance in separation, they typically vary from two inches to about a foot or three foot. And the proposed ordinance would not eliminate any of the required parking, so parking would still have to comply with the city's ordinance. These are just examples of what other cities are currently doing. This is a Eagle Rock development, approximately twenty units on the lot, and it kind of varies in terms of square footage of each unit, but the lots are roughly about eight hundred to about fifteen hundred square feet each. This is an example in Silver Lake, and this particular sample is unique because it is a multi-agency partnership. They utilize the DWP right-of-way, which is the Department of Water and Power, easements as your front yard area, and they also added some additional guardians within that area. This other example is a more traditional, not very contemporary example, where it's in that nice, and it's roughly about, this is a little bit more dense than the other ones, but I believe it's somewhere about ten to fifteen units. But again, it's, it's very typical in terms of your single-family development, two stories. So the proposed ordinance will allow this type of subdivisions in certain zones. The first one that the city is exploring to allow it is within the transit zoning code, which is ST eighty-four, in essence downtown, and this is more or less the area that we'll be limiting it to. The second area that we're exploring is within specific plan number two, or otherwise known as harbor mixed-use transit code, so along harbor, small subdivisions will be allowed. And then the last zoning district is the Metro East Overlay Zone, and the diagram is depicting again the boundaries of that particular SD. And then the fourth option will be through the establishment and of a specific development, we will have to bring that to the Planning Commission Council for approval. I didn't want to go ahead and get into much detail in terms of the development standards of the entire proposed ordinance, I just wanted to highlight some key development standards to you all. The minimum requirement for the lot size will be a thousand square feet, this is for the subdivision lot, not the initial lot. The initial lot will have to follow the law requirements of the specific zoning district. We are proposing a maximum of seventy, seventy square foot for lot coverage. Commissioner Becerra had a concern with regards to this. The city of LA currently has a lot coverage of eighty percent, and staff felt that it was inappropriate for Santa Ana. We did take into consideration the fact that when we did a visit of some of these small subdivision in Costa Mesa and the city of LA, the common area was kind of nowhere to be found, and it was lacking. So we feel that the proposed seventy percent will be adequate to meet the needs of Santa Ana residents, and as well as address some of our park deficient issues we have in the city. As mentioned, all the setback, design guidelines, FAR, density, will have to refer back to the initial zoning district, so the, the proposed ordinance does not have any high restrictions, it refers back to the initial zoning district. We are requiring a minimum of three hundred square feet of open space per lot, this is the subdivision lot, not the initial lot. For developments of ten or more units or lots, the developer will have to provide at least five percent of the initial lot for common open space. The other difference between this proposal type of development versus a condo is that they usually come with a maintenance agreement rather than an HOA. However, the ordinance does have limitations in terms of when we, when the city will require a homeowners association agreement, and I believe that anything over five units, anything below that, a maintenance agreement would be sufficient. That concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does the commission have any questions of staff? Phil?
Oh, you sure?
Please.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Becerra. I was not here at the last meeting, and I apologize, but one of the questions that I have is, I know one of the commissioners asked this question already, how this would be funded, and in the report, in the minutes, it said the staff answered as to how this would be funded. How would it be funded?
So I believe the initial question was, how are these type of developments insured through insurance agencies? So they basically fall under the same regulations as a single-family home. In terms of the development for, for this, developers usually go out there for loans to get these projects built.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I have another question. It says that on the page two, it says, many Southern California cities have adopted a small lot subdivision ordinance. I did a little bit of research, and I didn't see many cities besides LA and San Diego, are there any other cities?
There's a couple. LA is one of the better-known small subdivisions, they were kind of the one that was proactive in kind of becoming with this concept. Theoretically, it's, it's been in planning's articles for years, but they were one of the first larger cities to actually enact an ordinance of, of this concept, as well as city, I mean county of San Diego. Costa Mesa has one that, it's fairly new, but it's been established for a while. Westminster recently adopted one, the city of Glendale, Burbank is also in the process of adopting one, as well as the city of Southgate.
Thank you.
Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, great presentation, I like the graphics, very good. One, one thing, since you're saying things that I brought up previously, one, one thing that I, I talked with Vince about today was that these aren't townhomes in the sense that they're traditionally attached, and I just wanted to clarify, because there's a, one of the sections in here talks about how they're defined as townhome style, and, and they're not townhome style, because these are clearly separated from the foundation all the way to the sky, correct?
That's correct.
So there's no attachment whatsoever, whatsoever, other than any sort of expansion joint to keep out science experiments between the units?
That is correct.
Okay.
And after further discussion with our attorney, we are going to revise that language to make it a little bit more clear.
Okay, so, so is that for us then to strike that portion?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, I have another question I had, you already addressed the lot coverage for me, let's see. Oh, as far as the front driveways, so you guys are saying three feet is what we want because we don't want to see cars parallel parked there. Is three feet usually the rule as to where that prevents that, are we able to go to four feet? And the reason I ask is because I've worked on other projects where, you know, you can kind of get in some landscaping and some other treatment, but usually three feet might be a little tough to get anything in there, so is three feet the hard and fast rule as far as keeping cars from parking there?
Three feet is pretty standard.
Okay.
But we could look into additional feet if that's a concern, there's other cities that do have four or five, but once you start enlarging that number, then there might be the issue of encroachment.
Oh no, it's not a concern, it's just more of curiosity, because I was just trying to figure out how we arrived at that number.
It's currently in our code in other sections, about three feet for now.
Correct.
It's in the code as well, okay, okay. Other than that, I mean, I had a couple of questions earlier, but Vince helped me get through them. My main one that I had earlier was really kind of a separation issue that Vince and I talked about, the idea that these buildings, you know, the fire-rated walls, you know, you're, you're still having a clear separation, and that's the thing, is that when you see them, they look attached, but they're not.
Correct.
And they provide a great opportunity for homeownership, so, again, great job on the ordinance, thank you.
Correct, yeah, we're definitely going to clarify that language before we take it to council, and then we're also going to be clarifying the, the language that specifies to the publicly accessible area. I believe that was in...
Yeah, forty-one dash twenty-one oh two F-two.
Yes, that's correct.
We just want to make this clear, that normally we have private and common open space requirements for development, and we did add the word, it should be publicly accessible to common open space, and Commissioner Becerra had some concern that what was the interpretation, someone might think that that means it has to be open, a public, it has to be open publicly to the public, general public, and we're going to go ahead and clarify that in order just to, to ensure that it's going to be public accessible to the residents only.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very well.
You're such a gentleman tonight.
Such a gentleman tonight.
Can you review parking situation?
In terms of the number required, or?
Right, since they're much lot, smaller lots, it's limited to how many people live there, so is it one car?
So each of these specific development districts or zoning districts have their own kind of parking ratio, it kind of varies depending if you're in downtown or you're in harbor, it's a little bit different, but they still have to comply with the required parking. In, in most cases, you're looking at two parking spaces per unit, plus point one five for guest parking.
Eric? Thank you. You, you talked about not using two hundred square feet for the private open space, what was the thinking that went behind that? You'd mentioned that LA has two hundred square feet of private open space, did I hear that correctly?
I'm not sure if I...
Okay, so, there's an open space requirement, it says individual small lots shall provide a minimum three hundred square feet, I thought you had said that LA was using two hundred.
No, LA is currently using eighty percent lot coverage.
Okay, so seventy, eighty.
So if we give that an example, correct, so let's say it's a thousand square foot lot, then obviously, yeah, the remaining will be two hundred square feet.
Okay, so what was the analysis that you went through for that, the seventy versus the eighty, instead of the two?
Some of our staff members took a site visit to a couple of these locations, and what we did witness was that there was lacking common open space area. In addition to that, the city of LA has understand and witnessed that the proposed ordinance is lacking this common open space area, and they're currently in the process of revising the ordinance to reflect seventy-five percent lot coverage versus eighty.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Thank you.
Moving on, have we received any written communication on this matter, Secretary?
All written communication has been distributed.
Okay, thank you. We will now open for the public hearing. We've received one card here, Stephen Lamott.
Thank you, Chair, planning commissioners. My name is Steve Lamott, I am the CEO of the Building Industry Association of Orange County. Just by way of background, we're a nonprofit trade association, representing over 1,100 members, as well as over 100,000 individuals in the home building industry. And I do just want to personally say we are excited to see the small ordinance come forward. We have been working on this for quite some time within Orange County, and since I have started working here with the BIA, we have sort of made it our mission to try and educate local cities on really kind of where we're going in terms of for-sale housing. And so in 2016, we asked cities to pass our Housing Futures Initiative Resolution, and what this resolution stated was, "Let's look at design standards, let's look at flexible parking, let's look at flexible building standards as well," and we're fortunate to have the city of Santa Ana be the first city to pass that resolution. And so this is kind of the next step in supporting really that, that phase of where we're going to be going here in, here in Orange County. But, and recently, I don't know if you had the chance to read it, but I did have an op-ed in the Los Angeles Times recently on the small lot ordinance, and just a few takeaways, as you probably know, but we're short housing. In Orange County, we're about 7,000 homes short per year, and at the state level, that climbs to about 100,000 housing units short, which is clearly a staggering number. As you can imagine, rent as well as housing prices are continuing to skyrocket. Homeownership rates specifically in this area are at an all-time low, and we are the lowest homeownership rate in the nation, hovering around 40%. And if you did, if you read the Orange County Register this weekend, to be a little more specific, Southern California had 128,000 fewer homeowners than in 2007, and that's a 4% drop. During the same period, we added over 400,000 new renters to the area. We need all types of housing, renters, for sale, every type of housing there is, however, we do need to increase this homeownership rate. This is not just good for our cities, the economy, but it's good for the millennials, which, you know, which I do fall into that category, and this is a way to increase that for-sale homeownership rate, of course. So, as you know, land's not growing, our availability of land is going to decrease, and we're not going to see those big, single-family ranch homes that, you know, my parents grew up in, I grew up in, and this will be the future of the for-sale homes, so I really look, look forward to your support tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Does anyone wish to speak at this point in time? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Do we have a motion? Eric?
Sure.
I'll make a recommendation that the city council adopt an ordinance approving zoning ordinance amendment, number 2017-05, to amend chapter 41 of the code.
I'll second it with discussion.
Okay, Phil?
Like I said before, the ordinance is great, I think, you know, Vince walked me through it in Jerry's presentation, I mean, you guys did great. One thing that I've seen in LA that, you know, and staff, you guys can help me understand or help me work through it, but I guess one of my concerns always is trying to make sure that we have pedestrian connectivity to the units, and I know in LA, now it's in their design guidelines, they have language that talks about, let's see, I think the language says, "For homes not adjacent to the public street, provide pedestrian circulation in the form of private walkways or clearly delineated paths of travel from the sidewalk to their entryway." From what I read in the ordinance, I didn't see that, maybe I overlooked it, is it something that's in there?
We currently have citywide design guidelines that cover those bases right here that you mentioned, but the next step is taking a look at our design guidelines, see what we can do to address these types of projects, maybe some changes or tweaks we have to make to it. But currently, we have some pedestrian connection and pedestrian usability standards in our code, our guidelines.
So our guidelines would cover that concern, then?
That's correct. In addition to that, the reasoning why we're proposing these certain zoning districts is because they're already established form-based codes, so they already have really strict design guidelines that they need to follow.
Well, I mean, form-based codes, again, is form-based, it's more on the buildings, I'm really more specifically talking about the site planning and pedestrian connectivity.
Correct, these ordinance, these particular zoning districts do have language that talks about pedestrian connectivity and internal circulation. And in addition to that, as Vince mentioned, there is the design guidelines that talk about that.
Okay, perfect. The only other comment I have is just, you know, I know during the work-study session I had mentioned, I'd love to see these in some of the other higher-density areas, the R3s, the R4s, but I think this is just a great start to begin with, let's see where it goes. I'd like to ask staff, maybe in about a year, to come back to us and just give us an update on the progress on it. I know that Mark and I and Beatrice were in, oh no, I'm sorry, it was Mark and I were in a meeting with our general plan group, and we were talking about the success of the Harbor corridor, excuse me, and how comparatively the two Harbor plans, you see such a dramatic increase in success on it. So I'm hoping that we'll have the same results in a year on this, and so with that, I'll be supporting the motion.
Okay, any other discussion at this point in time for this motion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. It's now time and place for a public hearing of item number four, modify conditional use permit number 2016-05 to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for the premise consumption at Kaimuza Restaurant located at 305 East Fourth Street. Do the commissioners at this point in time have anything that they wish to disclose regarding this item? Hearing none, staff?
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This is an application on behalf of Leonard, who represents the property owner, as well as Kyomisu Restaurant. This particular, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize, my presentation's not on. This particular application is to modify an existing CUP, so it's not a brand-new conditional use permit. The location was previously entitled back in April of 2016 to allow the onsite consumption and sale of beer and wine. The proposed conditional use permit that you're seeing today is to modify this existing CUP in order to allow the additional sale of distilled spirits, in addition to expand the conditional use permit into Suite 104, as well as to conduct some minor interior improvements. The proposed, or the existing restaurant is located in downtown Santa Ana, specific development number 84. As previously indicated, this is an existing establishment that will be expanding to the adjacent suite number, Suite 104. It is primarily surrounded by other restaurants and retail stores and offices throughout the area, and currently, there is Worst House as well as Native Sun that are very similar in terms of concept to this existing establishment. So this is just a diagram depicting the current suite number and the proposed suite number, so they're currently operating within units, or Suite 105, and they are increasing into Unit 104. Their alcohol storage will remain within the 5% maximum that's allowed per our code. And then the applicant is here, and he could elaborate more in terms of the operation of the proposed restaurant. It's an existing sushi establishment, but they are going to be expanding in terms of the number of operators within the particular unit, something very similar to that of McFadden and Fourth Street Market, as well as the concept that you guys heard today earlier for the 1901 project. This is just a site photo. As indicated, this is an existing location, so the police department did not have any issue with regards to the upgrade in license, although it is in a concentrated area, most of downtown Santa Ana, it's kind of already over-concentrated, but this is just an upgrade, so they're not adding an additional license. The applicant will be submitting tenant improvement plans in order to modify the existing layout and well as to accommodate the new uses within the restaurant. We have no issues with the proposed conditional use permit, and staff is recommending that the planning commission approve modification number one to conditional use permit number 2016 as condition.
Does the Commissioner have any questions to staff? Patrice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see that on the report, it says that Suite 104 would be reserved for an art gallery, and the alcohol would be sold during special events. Who's going to run that art gallery?
So the operator is going to be running both units, and the concept is still being developed. They've seen this type of operation in downtown LA, and they felt that by incorporating alcohol as well as that backdoor area for a restaurant, it would have a different experience for the customers of the area. But the applicant could elaborate more in terms of how that's going to function, but it's not uncommon to see these multiuses be intertwined together.
Could you tell me the hours of operation of the Takariya at the end of the block and the Worst House? What are their hours of operation?
I'm not too certain what the hours of operation are for the Takariya, you're talking about the north, let me go back here, north or southwest corner of the building?
I'm looking at the picture here, and you have all these here on the same side, so it's not far from the proposed site, and then you have the Worst House, so are they also open until 2:00 AM?
I don't have that information, I know Native Sun does have an after-hours operation, and so does Worst House. I'm not sure if the Takariya has after-hours of operation.
And what are the after-hours, is it till 2:00 as well?
I wouldn't be certain, so normally, anything in downtown, does it not require conditional use permit only after 12:00 AM?
The Worst House is until 4:00 AM, the only one in the city has a 4:00 AM, everything else is 2:00 AM.
Right, that was, that's the one and only that got 4:00 AM.
Now, they're only serving food until 4:00, they cut off their alcohol at 2:00.
Correct. Normally, businesses will close right after the alcohol hours, so typically 2:00.
And Native Sun is till 2:00.
Yeah, every other establishment that has an after-hours is till 2:00 AM in downtown, under several of them.
And, just to ask, since the, these locations have been open till 2:00 AM, what's been the scene like? Has it been pretty calm, has, have we had, you know, arrests of, you know, drunk folks hanging out too long or making scenes? Has that increased at all since now it's till 2:00 in the morning?
So part of our analysis, the police department usually gives us a report, there's been some minor incidents, but normally, they cannot correlate if it's directly from a particular business. But activity in terms of, like, public intoxication, I believe there was one incident within the last year.
Okay, now, because they are open so late, are they required to have some type of security?
Correct, so currently, our municipal requirement, I believe, after certain number of individuals, there's like a security plan that needs to be established in the police department.
Those are all standards in the code, they're not conditions, they have no ability to waive them, they have to comply with them, so they comply, they don't comply. As Jerry mentioned, the police has analyzed the project, identified no issues related to this establishment or any surrounding ones that would cause them to be alarmed from a police perspective, and therefore, they're recommending approval.
Thank you.
Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On your conditions for approval, you have a condition number three, "Prior to exercising the rights of this permit, the applicant shall submit tenant improvement plans for review and approval." Is there a reason why we've included that? And I'm asking only because I haven't seen this condition typically on other ones, so is this something that we're starting to do more often, or is there a specific reason for this particular application?
This particular tenant is very conceptual, so we don't want to hold down their CUP application. So the actual floor plan that you're seeing today is still very conceptual in terms of theory and what the applicant's developing, so there might be some changes in terms of a door being here or a wall being here, so that is just to reinforce that the applicant will have to submit tenant improvements. I mean, it's pretty standard, but we just wanted to make sure that they do that prior to exercising this conditional use permit.
I mean, I should normally wait till later on to say this, but I'm a little uncomfortable with just kind of approving this conceptual sort of thing, doors, windows moving around, because I think that's part of the whole process for us. You know, we're trying to look at safety, we're looking at all these other issues. If, let's just say, I'm just making this up, let's say a door moves a certain place that all of a sudden my colleagues aren't comfortable with it, but that's okay, it's out of our hands now. I just, I think for future applications, that should be coming to us when it's ready to build, not, you know, pie in the sky conceptual. I mean, I love the idea of new concepts coming to the city, but I don't think there's a rush to kind of fine-tune it, especially for granting them alcohol.
Right, the only concern that we did have was with Unit 104, and that is the one that they're still developing. Currently, right now, it's a bookstore, so they're thinking of converting that into like an art gallery.
Right, no, I saw that in the staff report, but I mean, if you're talking about windows and doors moving around, that can change, at least for me, I'll say it could change my opinion on how I feel about the application. So I just, I'm not comfortable with that typically happening where you guys are just, "Oh, don't worry, we as staff will take care of it," because that's the whole point of us being up here. So, again, I'm just saying that out loud, I just don't like the idea of it being so vaguely conceptual, and you're, I mean, it's not like we're finding out later, I mean, you're telling us right here, "Oh, things are going to change." So it just makes it a little difficult for me.
Right, it's going to change in terms of like the interior, how it's laid out, that's why if you look at Suite 104, there's no details in terms of the actual floor plan.
Eric?
Yeah, so, I didn't pick up on that, but that does bother me, it's kind of like a half-bait coming to us, so that gives me pause, that's it.
Cynthia?
So, thank you. So let's say they decide, you know, the art gallery's a no-go, so will it return to us then with the new concept, or is, do they just get to change their mind?
So you're entitling both Suites 104 and 105, there is a condition that any revisions need to go before the planning manager.
Okay, so therefore, if it does not become a art gallery, whatever, they decide to do more tables, whatever, it's going to come back to us? No?
To them, I'm saying, I guess my concern...
Your staff review.
Only to staff?
But I think we have the power, if we want, once we get to that point, if we want to revise that condition, I think we can have it come back, but to us, not just to staff.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, this is typical in other restaurants where there's an existing CUP and they do tenant improvement, it's usually done all through administrative process.
Yeah, but when there's an existing CUP and they're not, and they're doing TIs, that's not seeking another CUP, that's a totally different ballgame. I mean, we, I don't know if you were here, but we just had that conversation about an applicant seeking another CUP, and this commission had some concern about that, so, I mean, we, I think as a commission, want to apply our standards fairly across the entire city and across all applicants, so I think we would want to know what's going on before we just approve something like alcohol for them to sell.
Patrice?
I just want to understand this a little more, but we have, we had a previous one that we voted on, and it had two different CUP numbers. Does this one only have one because it already has an existing one, or...
The one you voted on before was two separate applications, coffee house and a juice bar. So in case one was in violation, we can revoke one CP, the other one can still operate with a CP, with ABC license. This one's just one tenant, so one CP ever.
There's two suites.
But there was, there was one unit that was given the CUP originally, and now they want to do a CUP for both units, and they also want to change the CUP from what it was previously, correct?
Correct, they're expanding it to...
It's going from beer and wine to full alcohol. So you got two different actions taking place. Any other comments or questions of staff? Would the applicant like to discuss first, talk on this comment on side of the floor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess quickly, the doors that we were talking about, it was an interior door that we're just deciding on one wall where it's going to go, it's not any kind of exterior door or any kind of change of that matter. We were just trying to see if we were going to go closer to the 105 side or a little bit more in the middle, so it's, I don't think it's going to affect things too much. Will be the operators in there, so we're the ones that are, Kyomisu was our original concept, but we want to expand the back and to do the bar in the back, and the gallery portion of it was something that was more just to activate the daytime activity for there. When we do our bigger gallery releases, working in conjunction with DJ who's already there, and Marcus, those are the nights that we wanted to kind of have the bar be able to service that spot with them, without them having to continually find like temporary licenses and the such for that space, so we can just kind of like work together in conjunction with those things. Right now, we have McFadden Public Market Place as well, and we just kind of want to help out the community, we've been hiring as much as possible locally, so... We've been hiring as much as possible locally, so I'm not sure if there was any other questions about how the layout was going to be, or if there's anything you wanted to hear from us.
Does anyone in the commission have a question of the applicant? Hearing none?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, have we heard any, have we received any written communication on this item?
All communication has been given to the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. We'll now open this item to public hearing. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Phil?
I want to thank the applicant for doing what you're doing. I really appreciate it. My concern was not so much with your concept. I like what you're talking about, I like what's going on. I just, it's more the manner that it's been brought here, and I think just given the timing and some of the other items that we've been talking about. Again, I'm really excited, and I always want to see our city be the first to have something innovative or new. Even if LA might have beat us to it, that's okay. You know, we'll be at least the first in Orange County, so I appreciate that. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we approve CUP number 2016-05 with an amendment to condition number three on Exhibit A to change Planning and Building Agency to Planning Commission if there's a substantial changes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Eric, second. Any further discussion? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. Thank you. It's now time and place for a public hearing on item number five, conditional use permit number 2017-24 to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption at the Brazen Sexy Sandwich location at 31 MacArthur Crescent. Staff?
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. Before you, we do have a conditional use permit 2017-24 to allow a new restaurant, Brazen Sexy Sandwiches, to serve beer and wine, and this is located at 31 East MacArthur Crescent, specifically Unit 102. Project description, just like I stated, it is a new restaurant. Its intention is, the conditional use permit is to allow the sale of beer and wine for on-premise consumption, and they are currently in the process of obtaining the building permits to be able to accommodate the new restaurant. Here is the site description. So these, the parcel or the specific area is in a specific plan, SD number 43, also known as the MacArthur Place District Center. It's surrounded by multifamily residence, an office complex, and a hotel. This is an aerial photo, and as you can see, in red is the location of the unit. And again, it's at the, at the MacArthur Place Center district. This is a floor plan. It is a fairly small unit. It's approximately 1,000 square feet. It will only seat 16 customers, individuals at once, and the alcohol storage is less than the .5 gross floor area. It's actually really fairly small, and it'll be under the countertop. This is a site photo of the existing location, and here is the project analysis. The site currently meets all the San Ana Municipal Code, and it is a use allowed in the specific development number 43 with the conditional use permit. The restaurant will provide a new service to the community and its visitors, and it will be the first restaurant to allow or to serve the beer and wine, and will be the first restaurant to stay open until 12:00. In addition to that, the alcohol license will encourage the new opportunities for businesses' growth and provide a new service to the mixed-use development. Just like I mentioned, it is the first restaurant, and hopefully we foresee another restaurant opening if the adjacent suite. And the standards, as we previously stated, are in the Municipal Code, will ensure that the restaurant not deviate from any planned operation review under this application, or it will not become an attractive nuisance. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 2017-24. The applicant and myself are here to answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay. Before we do that, just for the record, do any of the commissioners have anything that they wish to disclose on this item at this point in time? Hearing none? Okay. Do you have any questions of staff at this moment? Hearing none? Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
Do you have questions? I didn't know I was speaking.
Any questions, or any?
I actually do.
Okay, go ahead. You probably want to ask-
I'd like to find out how you came up with the name of your restaurant.
There you go. Everybody, it's a mystery.
My daughter is chef, and she said-
How sexy is your sandwich?
Sexy as we can make them. You know, just braised meat, cheese, just not your typical dally sandwich.
So you basically have to go try it to understand the name.
Pork belly, short ribs, that kind of thing.
Hmm. Not my kind of sandwich.
Yeah. We've been working on this concept for quite a while. Both been in the business for many, many years, and this is sort of our, our dream, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Madam Secretary, have we received any written correspondence on this item?
All correspondence has been distributed.
Okay. We'll now open the, we'll open the public hearing at this point in time. Does anybody wish to speak on this item at this moment? Hearing none, we'll move back to the commission for a motion on this item number five.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit 2071-24.
Second. Second, Phil? Okay. Any further discussion? With that, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six-zero. Thank you. At this time, do we have any comments from staff? Vince?
Just a couple of quick ones, Mr. Chair. I know we had spoken to you about maybe council on the 27th, meeting the day after, well, the meeting after Thanksgiving, we may have an item we have to get on the agenda in order to meet some funding deadlines for them, for the developer to meet in January, so you'll probably get a packet next week from us for one item, looks like, for that meeting. Number two, our last meeting will be December 11th, and we're going to host a little holiday reception for all of you before the meeting, so alcohol not included, Mr. Dorete, sorry, but maybe after the meeting. So look forward for some, for some details for that little reception, and then happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Planning commission comments. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to welcome back Sarah. Good to see you. And I, too, would wish, want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and that's it for me.
Eric?
No comments.
Cynthia?
I also wanted to welcome Sarah back. It's nice to see you. If you haven't seen a picture of her baby, you must see little Stella. She's adorable. And happy holidays to you guys.
Pictures?
Yes, I look forward to seeing you at the tree lighting ceremony. Those of you that are going, I'm not sure, but I will be there. And I also had on my notes to welcome Sarah, so can't wait to see a picture of your baby, and happy Thanksgiving.
I just want to confirm, is the November 27th will be a meeting, right? One item?
Ninety-five percent, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome back, Sarah. We'd love to have you back. Thank you.
So, I think the notice that went out showed that the next meeting would be December 11th, so if you could adjourn to November 27th, that would be great.
Okay. I just have two quick items. One is, the item with regards to the accessory units went in front of the council last meeting. Where does that stand, or where did it end up?
They continued the item for 30 days and asked us to come back as a study session item before then. So we're going to go back on, I think, November 21st or December 5th, a couple of meetings.
Do we have any idea what the issues were?
There was a couple of speakers spoke about the ordinance wasn't flexible enough for them. One, I think, the former city manager, Garden Grove, talked about some issues with the house he's purchasing and trying to get some flexibility, so the council asked to go back and study his recommendations. Then they just weren't sure, they felt like it was being rushed before them, so they wanted to sit back, walk them through the different items on the EDU ordinance, so we're putting together a little presentation for them. So it looks like it's going to go to them, I believe December 5th is the date that we're going to go, December 5th, study session, and then back to them on, in January for actual ordinance adoption.
Okay. And then, go ahead.
Real quick, when we, the item that was here, the homes off of Secret Strim and Jaguar Way, how did we leave that? Did we actually vote for it, or did we ask for them to come back with a traffic, another traffic study?
You voted to recommend approval of it. City council approved it, and you asked us to study some options for access and egress for the neighborhood.
Okay, so that still is-
Yes, and their traffic consultant has done some work and has been coordinating with our, with our traffic consultants.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And the other question I had was that, this is a conversation with Candia, but we talked about this the other day, was the item with regards to the commissioners and the business cards with regards to the email addresses.
Yes, you're going to be getting both, be getting business cards and city emails, and we're working through all those details.
Okay. So, that's been, that's been brought up again, and that's been put forth, and it's going to, we're going to move forward with email addresses for each and every one of the commissioners that'll be in the city. Okay?
Yeah, I'll check on the status of where those cards are at, and those can get pretty quickly, we can get those out to you. The emails, coordinate with IT department, it takes a little bit of time with our city.
Okay. Again, it's good to see you back, Sarah. We appreciate it, and also I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving, and we'll see you back on November 27th for the next planning commission meeting. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Sarah?
Good news, but I believe, I told you that.